Of a remote participant, Councilmember Fernandez is connected remotely. And so I think it would probably be appropriate, since we have an in-person quorum, if there's a motion to approve her remote participation.
To approve, Councilmember Fernandez attending remotely.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Councilmember Kravitz, I'm told, is going to be a little late, but he should be here. So, okay, Mr. Bia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, we are preparing, with the council's blessing, to move towards hopefully issuing some debt next year to get us to the point of building a public safety facility. In that process, we rely very heavily, not only on our financial advisor, but as well as on our bond counsel, to guide us through this whole endeavor. I'm happy to present Dwayne Draper, our bond counsel here this morning. He's going to walk you through the general obligation bond process, answer any questions you might have, hopefully beginning maybe introduce himself and give us a little bit of background on him and his practice.
Very good. Mr. Draper, good morning.
Good morning. I'm glad to be here. My name is Dwayne Draper, and I'm with the law firm of Bryant Miller Olive. Firm's 55 years old. It's my 30th year at the firm, and I've been serving Temple Terrace as its bond counsel for, this is my 20th year. Think we've done closer to 10 bank loans during that timeframe. So it's great to be back in front of you, and I'm happy to kind of walk you through the general obligation bonding process. And I would encourage anybody to interrupt me at any time with any questions that you may have. This is what a workshop is for. So the city does have the ability, under its charter, under the Florida Constitution, to finance police and fire capital projects through a new, the creation of a new revenue source, in essence, utilizing geo-bonds. You can do it as a single question, so police and fire is a public safety complex or complexes. It requires a citywide referendum. I'll give you an example of a referendum question that passed 60% to 40% in 2024 in a different city here in Florida, the city of Key West. And it read on the ballot, you know, "City of Key West, general obligation bonds for public safety projects per n, police and fire closed per n." And the question itself, which is limited to 75 words, was "To finance acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of police and fire infrastructure, including a new fire station. Shall the city of Key West issue not exceeding $60 million general obligation bonds in one or more series, maturing in 30 years or less, bearing interest not exceeding the maximum legal rate secured by and payable from the full faith, credit, and unlimited ad verum taxing power of the city?" And then it's yes for bonds, no against bonds. So that's an example of, you know, what could end up in front of your citizenry if you all were to proceed with a general obligation bond. In addition to the city of Key West, this mechanism has recently been used successfully by other Florida municipalities, including the cities of Cape Coral, Doral, Fort Lauderdale, Fort Myers, Hollywood, Melbourne, Miami Beach, Miami Gardens, Oakland Park, Palm Bay, Pompano Beach, Port St. Lucie, Port Orange, South Miami, Sunrise, Venice, and Palm Beach.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just because Councilmember Fernandez is reaching out, she's having trouble hearing. Would you mind moving that microphone? It's got to be real close to you, else it won't really project. That's much better.
How does that sound?
That should be better.
Okay. Wonderful. The revenue source is called the voted millage, which is separate and distinct from, and in addition to your standard operating millage, it is in effect the city's unlimited ad verum taxing power for a time certain, for example, 30 years from bond issuance. So it's a not-for-ever tax. It's considered by lenders and rating agencies to be the strongest source of security that the city can offer, which means the lowest possible borrowing costs. The geo-referendum could be scheduled to occur at the 2026 primary election or the 2026 general election. In other words, piggybacking an existing election to minimize the costs. We would work, Linda, I would work with Linda to contact the Hillsborough County Supervisor of Elections to determine the deadline relating to the desired election. Most likely would be next summer-ish. So what that would mean is that the city council would be required to adopt a resolution calling that referendum before that deadline, which, you know, for discussion purposes, we could assume would be in spring 2026. The statute would then require notice of the bond referendum to be published twice in advance of the election. One interesting sidebar that's helpful once you do call a referendum, if you call a referendum, is a 2022 Florida law that prohibits the expenditure of public funds by local governments to educate the voters, whether advocacy or even providing just factual information. And I'll give you some color around that, so y'all could understand kind of how to operate in that environment in just a minute. But if the geo-bond referendum does pass in November 2026, for example, the city council would adopt a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds. This would be in the wake of the successful vote in this scenario. And we would do a bond validation procedure under the Florida statutes that utilizes, usually takes three to four months, and those are typical in general obligation bond issues. On a parallel track to the bond validation, the city manager, the finance director, and the rest of the team could work with the financial advisor and others to prepare documentation, along with us, for the bond issue to ultimately be presented to the rating agencies and/or the lender community. So the first tranche of the geo-bonds in this scenario would be ready for issuance in the early part of 2027. So beginning to end, it's about 18 months to get money in the bank, I would say. And again, that presumes you selected one of those two scheduled elections to piggyback off of. And a big question is always, how can we, city council members, how can we, city staff, communicate with the electors once we've called the referendum in advance of the referendum? And Section 106.113 Florida statutes does not preclude the local government or a person on, working on behalf of, local government from some of the following actions: reporting on official actions of the local government, government's governing body in an accurate, fair, and impartial manner; posting factual information on a government website or in printed materials; hosting and providing information of public forum; providing factual information in response to inquiry; or providing information as otherwise authorized or required by law. According to the Division of Elections opinion 10-06, factual information must be limited to verifiable actualities. Example, the new tax will permit the city to purchase 25 buses at a cost of $100,000 each. It cannot have subjective or qualitative statements or comments. For example, the tax will improve public transportation. Elected officials can always express their opinions. Government employees are allowed to express their opinions at any time and in any manner, so long as the statement of opinion does not violate the prohibitions of 106.113 regarding use of public funds, i.e., can't spend public funds to amplify opinions through political advertisements or any other communication sent to electors. Anyone may speak to the media to express their opinion on a referendum item, as long as public funds are not used to pay for providing the communication. For example, agency officer, employee, staff member speaks to editorial staff or other media outlet. This is allowed, as long as the media is not being paid for the communication. Staff would be allowed to use public equipment to prepare for the interview. Officials can speak as they wish regarding an issue, but are only allowed to expressly advocate a position if no public funds are used to pay for the media coverage. An example is an employee could use the agency copy machine to copy material leaflets or pamphlets, which contain only factual information. Leaflets in and of themselves do not violate the statutory prohibition, as long as they are not sent to electors. Leaflets could be provided to those in attendance at a public forum, since hosting and providing information at a public forum is authorized by the law. Can you express an opinion while using the computer? An employee would be allowed to use an agency computer, so long as they are not creating material which constitutes a political advertisement or any other communication sent to electors concerning a referendum. For example, no emails to electors. Posting of opinion on the internet is allowed, as long as it is considered expenditure of public funds for communications, media in general. Internet usage, online activity is considered an expenditure if there's an actual cost associated with the activity. Example, paying for the creation of a website or email lists. The cost of the internet access is not deemed an expenditure of public funds if the internet access was in place prior to the dissemination of the material. And lastly, use of agency telephone. The use of telephone is considered an expenditure of public funds only if the phones or equipment were purchased specifically for this purpose. Cost of pre-existing phone service is not considered an expenditure of public funds for this purpose. So that kind of gives you a little bit of color and flavor as to how elected officials and staff could communicate and interact with the electorate, should you call a referendum, between then and when the referendum actually happens. So that's kind of a flyover of the process and some of the issues that tend to come up during the process. You know, next steps, to the extent that the city council is amenable to this, would be, in consultation with the city attorney, we would draft a resolution that would include a ballot question that would be ultimately considered for adoption at a future meeting in 2026 for the city council. And we would, you know, try to, and determine which of the elections, if the city council were amenable to this process, which election to aim for, and to work backwards from that. So I'll stop and see if there are any questions. That's kind of the general flyover of the general obligation bonding process. I have not been through this with you as a community before, but we have done this many times in recent years. In the periphery, we're considering some geo-bond questions in city of St. Petersburg for the same cycle. We serve as their bond counsel. We serve as Pasco County's bond counsel. We did four successful bond referendum question in 2019. Just to give you a sense of some of the folks, we are bond counsel to Hillsborough County, and Hillsborough County has recently, when I say recently, in the last decade renewed their environmentally sensitive lands program utilizing the general obligation mechanism. So this is tried and true in the area as well, as Florida in general.
Mr. Draper, can you back up just a little bit and then talk to us about some of the benefits to bonds as opposed to traditional bank financing for larger projects and things like that? And I'm assuming that the debt service cost less, the interest rates are better for bonds. But could you do a little comparison, contrasting between conventional financing and bonds to kind of lay the groundwork for us?
Yeah, Mayor, that's a great question. And when I refer to bond, or bonds, plural, or bonds singular, I'm talking about capital markets transactions and bank loans, which are direct private placements. Typically, a bank loan is evidenced by a bond singular. So then, five to 10 financings that we have worked on for the city over the years, we've issued a bond. And as it pertains to what makes more sense, a direct private placement or a capital markets transaction, a lot of times that has to do, and you have a really great financial advisor who will help guide you through the process of the financial structuring, but what I tend to hear them say is it depends upon how long you want to pay the debt back over. What's good about debt for capital projects is you're able to pay the debt commensurate with the useful life of the asset being financed. And the two types of projects we're talking about, fire and/or police public safety complexes, are long useful-life assets. So if you were to finance it over a period of 10 to 15 years, you would probably have a choice between a direct placement bank loan and a capital markets transaction. And you might make that decision based upon what is the lowest cost of funds. If you were to use 30-year financing, typically the direct placement option goes away, because banks are reticent to give you a fixed interest rate over more than about 10 to 15 years. Whereas in the capital markets, you're able to get a fixed interest rate, therefore, you know, in essence, lock in the, the operating millage, of course, work, of the voted millage, of course, works against a tax valuation, but to lock in your payments for the 30-year period of time. And so your financial advisor would work closely with you as to whether or not you wanted to do a directly placed bond or a capital markets transaction, i.e., bonds, based in part on decisions you all would make about how long to pay the debt back over. So that's kind of, that's kind of the nuance there. And then there's two types of bonds. There's the general obligation bond, which we're talking about today. There's also the revenue bond. What's useful about the general obligation bond is twofold. One, it creates a new revenue source to pay for it, and it does so with the blessing of the electorate. The revenue bonds we've done in the past, or revenue bond singular, have typically been operating within your existing resources, your existing revenue model, without creating a new revenue source. And so that's the benefit of the general obligation bond, is it creates an additional funding source that's blessed by the electorate.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Mr. Bia?
Just to add a little bit more to what Mr. Draper said. So we're looking at costs that are probably going to be anywhere between $15 to $20 million. We don't have an estimate yet, so once we get it from the architect, it could be different, but I'm just guessing here what the cost might be. If the general, the value, the real value of the general obligation bond, not only for the term we're talking about, as Mr. Draper put, is the fact that it's not going to put pressure on the budget. Because if we have to rely on that every year through a revenue bond type of approach, where we actually have to make those numbers work, it's going to put a lot of pressure on our millage rate to make all the math work. Not that I'm concerned that we're going to hit the 10 max mils, but it does put pressure on the millage rate. And so it, from a perspective of, this police and fire are two of the services that I think are the most popular in our city. So I feel fairly confident that the voters would support a general obligation bond. That's also part of the reason why I've been recommending it to the council. And financially, I think it makes more sense for us at this point.
Great, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the information. I believe you called it a devoted millage or a dedicated millage. How does that work within the cap of 10 mils?
Great question, yeah. So what is, I call it a voted millage. So you have your operating millage, which is subject to the 10-mil cap, and you're very used to operating within the confines of that. The voted millage is outside of the 10-mil cap, so it doesn't count towards, so, you know, once you have an understanding of the cost of the project and the not-to-exceed amount, you'll be able to figure out, based on current taxable values, what your voted millage would look like relative to your operating millage. But for purposes of the 10-mil cap, it's outside that calculation.
How would that be listed then, or property tax bills?
It would be segregated. It'd be segregated. That's right.
Okay. Would it require a simple majority for passage in a referendum?
Correct.
Percent plus one percent.
That's correct. And in fact, residents of the city of Temple Terrace, already on their tax bill, probably already have a voted millage, for example, for the Hillsborough County ELAP bonds, general obligation bonds. So it'd be a similar, you know, entry for your police and fire inside the city, but it's a simple majority.
The rating process, would that occur before or after the election?
After.
After.
So while we're doing the bond validation on the left, we would do a parallel track, and assuming that you're going to do a capital markets transaction, it would be necessary to get the bonds rated, the city rated. And so that would be on a parallel track. As we prepare the bond issue, it would be to present the package to the rating agencies and to get those ratings back, so that you can enjoy the lowest cost of funds for your taxpayer on the voted millage. That's correct.
One final question then would be the, all referendums need to go back, go through the BOCC for approval prior to placing on the ballot. Would this require that, for non-taxing, non-taxing authorities? There was an issue with the school district a couple of years ago, and BOCC rejected it, but then they found out that they were wrong, and they couldn't stop. Would we be required to follow the same path?
You would not. This would have nothing to do with the BCC. You would be able to do this autonomously.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Draper, on the voted millage, help us understand, so if we went out for a bond, easy numbers, let's just say that it was $30 million and the payments were $1.5 million a year, but as every year, the valuation of property fluctuates. So would the voted millage fluctuate in order to reflect, okay, we have to tax sufficient to make the payment every year, so that would change every year?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I would say, except for like '08, '09, '10, it's been drift, the taxable values have been drifting north. Therefore, if you had a voted millage, it would be decreasing as your taxable values were increasing. But if you did have, you know, the, like the Great Recession happened, when the Great Recession happened, you know, so taxable values dropped, then the voted millage had to go up to make the math work. So it's possible that you'd have that instance, but, you know, for 15 or 16 years in a row here, we've had taxable values going up, therefore, your voted millage would be going down year to year. Now, you could issue these bonds in one or more series. So in the case of Key West, for example, they have not to exceed $60 million in total. And that's an important number to get right, because, you know, you could do this in phases. You might do police, then fire, or fire, then police, or you might do them together. But each, the clock, the 30-year clock, based upon the way that was drafted, starts in the future, when the bond or bonds are issued, as far as the payback mechanism. But the not-to-exceed number never changes. So if you delay the phasing, you could be, have some inflationary risk and things of that nature as well. But you don't have to do them, you know, all $60 million on day zero. You could do $10 million, followed by a $30 million, followed by a $20 million, and each of them go out the 30 years, the way that was crafted.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I have two. On the referendum to the citizens, would there be an indication of what that millage would be or not?
So I think you could, as part of your process, education process, understanding the public funds, make it clear as to how the math is estimated to work. Or, you know, you could, you could educate the voter, based on current taxable values and parcels with the homestead, you know, how this might impact each, our typical residential parcel. So the question, though, would not have that math in it. The question would be typically presented as an unlimited geo, meaning whatever it needs to be to pay the debt service. So this would be sort of just part of the communication with the electorate, you know, in accordance with the law. There were these things called limited geos that really went out of style with the Great Recession, because those limited geos have a cap, like a millage cap, inside the question. And the problem is, those can get upside down. And so, and the risk of those, you've got to build in lots of coverage and to get the rating agencies comfortable, the lenders comfortable, and the cost of funds can be higher because of the risks. And so those have really gone out of vogue, sort of generally styled as unlimited geos. But it is, you know, it is a way, you know, it's pretty easy to figure out kind of how the math works in the context of the factual presentation of information during the process, if that makes sense.
Thank you. The second question, kind of hate to say it. Has there been any talk about what this process would be like if property taxes at the state level or what the discussion is now? How do you guarantee something if property taxes may be going away?
Yeah, I assume that, I mean, you know, nothing's changed. There's a lot of discussion, studies, so forth. But I think you'd proceed along with the idea that the world remains generally the same. And then, you know, between now and then, I guess we'll have a legislative session. And so, you know, something, we could have new information at that particular point in time that would change your strategy. But, you know, you know.
You don't have an answer, so.
I really don't have an answer. I really don't have an answer to that. It's hard for me to imagine that we would move much off of this, but.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Kravitz?
Thanks. Sorry for my tardiness. So if I ask any questions, you've already covered. Very sorry about them. They're pretty straightforward. First of all, is there any municipal bond analog to treasury inflation protecting security? And the second question is, if we construct a building using a bond, does that building typically get pledged as collateral?
So the, the second, I'll answer the second one first, because that's a fairly simple answer, which is, under the Florida Constitution, we can't mortgage City Hall, we can't mortgage the police station, so the source of security would really be just this revenue source, which would be the voted millage. As it relates to municipal bonds that may have inflation protectors built in or what have you, you know, that's not something that we have seen much of in the public finance space. I think, you know, I use this not-to-exceed $60 million figure for the city of Key West public safety complexes. It, you know, a lot of thought and planning ought to go into that number. So that not-to-exceed number doesn't necessarily mean you're going to issue $60 million of debt, but it just means that's going to be your cap. So you want to try to get your head around your phasing and inflationary pressures in coming up with that number. You know, you'll also have pressure on you from the standpoint of, we don't want to put a number that's unrealistically high in front of our electorate, on the one hand. On the other hand, you don't want to put something in front of your electors that could get, become less effective because of inflationary or phasing issues. And so that, that is typically where that action is in connection with this, as far as the, and then, and then, and then, once you've got that number and it's locked in from the electorate, you've got to work off of that. So value engineering, et cetera. But I don't, I don't see in our space investors taking that risk very often, or at all.
Interesting.
Which is, you know, I'm generally working in a commoditized space with single A, double A, and triple A credits, and I very much expect that you all would fall within that. Things are fairly vanilla in this, in this space. You know, interest rate swaps used to be a thing in this area many years ago. And during the Great Recession, I think things went back to being more vanilla in this space, just because of the nature of the goals of cities and trying to, you know, put public sector dollars to use in a way that people can understand. And so some of the more interesting products that were floating around in the early 2000s, you know, really have gone away. It's really mostly about how do we, you know, get the lowest cost of funds by putting something out there that will attract the most investors and so forth.
Okay, so something like an inflation-protected component at a lower interest rate in the short term that transitions over into a fixed rate later on, or something like that? It's not going to be workable?
You can do that in the general obligation space, though. It's a little tough to manage, variable rate versus fixed rate. I mean, it's, because oftentimes, in terms of the referendum and educating your voters, interacting with your voters, you want to have some level of certainty to that. If you got in the revenue bond context, I mean, certainly, certainly, and we've done this with the city before, when you choose variable rate versus fixed rate, in part, depending upon what investment rates are, what your spend down is, you know, to get tax exemption, you've got to spend it pretty quickly. You can't sit on it and arbitrage without having to return it to the federal government. And so, again, there's not a lot of variety insofar as, but, but, but the fixed rate, variable rate decision in the revenue bond context is a little bit more, especially if you're trying to figure out what rates are going to do, what you're getting on your investments, et cetera. In this space, I would expect it to be pretty much fixed rate. And then the inflation stuff to be kind of managed, and then not to exceed the phasing and/or value engineering at the end of the day.
And you mentioned two capital sources, one of which was private banks, and the other one was what?
Capital markets, so public offerings. So public offerings, capital markets, where you have a broker-dealer, an underwriter, who would sell the bonds on your behalf to institutional and retail investors with a investment-grade rating. And that's typically, that action is usually in the, you know, 15 to 30-year maturity space. Because banks generally don't want to give away their balance sheet for more than 10 to 15 years at a fixed interest rate. So if your, if your payback was 10, 15 years, you'd also be able to consider a direct placement of a bond with a bank. So that's sophisticated, resourceful lender, dealing with a sophisticated, resourceful borrower. So you don't have to have public disclosure, like an official statement or prospectus associated with that. So there's some reasons that those are more efficient in terms of cost of issuance, no ratings, no public disclosure. The disadvantages are, sometimes you have to crunch that up to 15 years or 10 years as opposed to being able to take advantage of the useful life of the asset, which could be further, and could go out 20, 20 years, 30 years. And when you get in the middle area, it's net, 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 what's the least costly. So the financial advisor who works for the city would help you all navigate what the appropriate vehicle is, depending upon what your payback scenario is.
Yeah. Got it. For a bond of this size, which is, I assume, quite small, would it be possible to split the issue so that you, for example, draw on a private bank part of it, and then maybe capital markets for the other part? Would that make sense?
It would. It would. It's, I think at the end of the day, it'll be what the math, the math works best. So this, this, you know, let's say it's 15 million, or 10 million, or 20 million, that would be attractive to either markets. And, and so I think it's, you know, if you're in the 10 to 20-year range, you kind of have a choice. If you're in the 20 to 30-year range, you're most likely going to be headed towards a capital markets transaction with ratings and, and public disclosure.
Okay, so that's interesting, because then you could split the issue, and you could go for a shorter-term bond from one source, longer-term bond from the other, and then you've mitigated your risk in various ways.
Yeah, this will be a not to exceed amount of X billion, and it'll be maturing in 30 years or less, for example. And so you don't have to pay your debt back over 30 years. You could pay it back over a lesser time, under the referendum. And then it just becomes a matter of, you know, the lesser the payback is, the more the voted millage will be, right? So it's kind of a question of, at the end of the day, how is this going to impact the property owner in terms of their tax bill? And so most of the time, people will take advantage of the full 30 years to lessen the impact on the, annually on the taxpayer.
Yeah, and can the city keep a contingent of bonds available to sell directly to interested parties? So for example, if you wanted to have 5,000, $10,000 bonds that you potentially sell to your own residents or something, or people in the area, would that be mixable with the other two types that we just discussed?
Yeah, so your financial advisor will lead you down this path of a direct placement, bank loan, bond, singular, or a capital markets transaction, which has the ratings and the public disclosure. The reason you have to do the public disclosure, the prospectus, is because you are potentially selling a $5,000 bond to somebody who's, that's their entire retirement, and they're not very sophisticated. And so it is on the city to tell them everything. And that's the purpose of the prospectus. In there, there are two types of methods of sale. One's called competitive sale, one's called negotiated sale. In either case, you're interacting with that same group of investors. The negotiated sale is when you bring an underwriter onboard through an RFP or what have you, early in the process. And they can set up a protocol to make priority orders for residents of the city, for example. And so that's how that works. You would not be able to have that customization if you did a competitive sale as far as the capital markets deal. But the negotiated sale, you could do that.
This is probably my last question. How about something like a land-to-debt swap with a potential buyer here in Temple Terrace? We've got some properties on the market. Would it be possible to exchange those in exchange for the person interested in the property purchasing a quantity of debt or receiving a quantity of debt that they have to pay off in order to compensate the property?
So you're saying that the bondholder would not, would purchase the bond with land? Is that in essence?
No, other way around. We give them land, and they buy debt from us. For example, instead of paying $2 million for the property, they purchase $3 million worth of debt, something like that, or whatever amount potentially interest-free. Would something like that be workable?
I think, I would say to you that the general obligation concept is, that would, that would be challenging, but we could, we could, we could look at that. The general obligation is really a way in which to tie voted millage on the bill away from the operating millage to the debt service that is being paid by the city and getting the voters' approval for that. So there's a box that we're creating. What you're describing is not undoable, but may be more appropriate for a different, like, for example, revenue bond context, which is, you know, what we've done some in the past. But that's, you know, as the city manager mentioned, that's competing against existing resources and so forth, which is still, could be a side, a side transaction. Because to the extent there's something there that's best interest of the city, you know, within the existing resources, you could, you could explore something like that in that context.
Great. Okay, thank you for being so well informed. I yield the floor.
Thank you.
No, we got it. So, actually, I need Mr. Bitier when he's done there. I need you. So this is probably beyond the scope of this particular conversation, but just, we're here, let's talk about context a little bit. So one of the things that has emerged that wasn't on the radar when this whole discussion began was that the PFAS project and the report that we'll be getting by the end of the year, hopefully, from C H A, which will almost certainly involve a significant investment. We don't know the details of that yet. I think everybody understands that these are separate issues, and that any revenues to address the PFAS issue would be concerning the water fund as opposed to a voted millage. So it would be obligating a different thing. But it still goes to overall debt of the city. So how would this work together with that? Or is it too early to be able to answer that?
Procedurally, I don't think they'll overlap, but they'll be related. From a credit rating perspective, when they do the bond rating, it's probably something they'll take into consideration. And when they typically go through, the bond raters will go through, ask a series of questions of staff, and are there any challenges out there, you know, on the horizon? It's a typical question they'll ask. So we'd have to mention that. This community, I'm happy to say right now, we have very little debt relative to our size. So I think from that perspective, we're in a good position for either of these, of these funding mechanisms. But it's something we'd have to declare in that process, and we'd have to see what, how that sugars out. And Mr. Draper may want to add to that.
I would only just mention that, you know, traditionally, you would fund your capital improvements in your water and sewer system off the rate base. So if you have a large capital expenditure in the water and sewer system, you would do that through existing water and sewer rate customers. It is not unheard of to buy down the rate increases through a potential ad valorem bond. In fact, what City of St. Petersburg is currently discussing is something similar in connection with accelerating the stormwater and some of their water and sewer projects by doing a potential bond referendum in the spring. And the idea is that they're going to put some of that, going to move it off the ratepayer to the taxpayer. And that's a policy decision at the end of the day. But, you know, if you have a large number that, that is hard to fully absorb within the rate base, this is an option to export part of that cost to the, to the taxpayer. It would have to be a separate question if you were to do it at the same election. It could be on a different timetable. And then you're just going to, you know, just have to weigh the effect on the taxpayer versus the water sewer ratepayer. And they're similar but different, they're not mutually exclusive. You've got Homestead working on one versus, and so there's, there's some math there to just kind of figure out, how would, you know, half of this on both versus all of it on the ratepayer work and so forth. But it's not unheard of to, to do something like that. One of the difficulties is if you, if you have to do it, and you don't need to go to the voters to do it, you know, putting a part of that out to the voters and getting a no, then you still have to do it, is also a consideration. So a lot of times, you'll see those as being projects we can put off. If it doesn't pass, we can put it off, we can defer it. It's not a regulatory issue. So that's another consideration in terms of whether you would want to use this G O mechanism for all our portion of a utility project. But, but for the most part, that is usually fully absorbed by the rate base inside the enterprise fund in the form of debt.
That's weighing heavily on my mind and kind of overshadowing this. Obviously, this project has been a priority for the council for a long time, but the PFAS thing is stickier. For one thing, we don't have any choice on that. This one, we can have some choice in this. The PFAS one, we're not going to have a lot of choice. The second thing is, is the funding is going to be far more complicated because our service area doesn't match our corporate city limits. I really don't see how the ratepayers are going to be able to fully absorb the cost of our mitigation. I mean, think of their water bill now, and then an additional debt payment on $30 million or something. I mean, you'd be paying a dollar a gallon for water somewhere. I mean, you couldn't. And yet, to transfer that just to taxpayers is not fair either, because then the residents are paying the full costs, and the people purchasing water that live outside the city aren't paying anything. So that's, I don't want to get lost on this, but this whole discussion, to me, is against that backdrop. Yes, please.
I agree with that. I would just remind everybody that we're not alone, because everybody around us will be having to do the same calculation and go through that same sort of processes, like, how does, how do our ratepayers, you know, fund this? Tampa's, they're looking at the $200 million bill. So that'll fall on the ratepayers, unless they have some other mechanism that I'm not aware of to fund that.
Okay. Councilmember Fernandez, did you, did you have anything? I don't know if she can't hear us, or if she's... Anything else, vice mayor?
Just a question, regarding the rate-based bond, however you call it, would that be a fixed rate or a customer rate, or would that be a consumption rate? Or does that matter? In other words, would it be $5 per month per bill for each, and remember, in the service, service area? Or would it be a dollar a gallon? Or does that?
I don't know if I have an answer to that.
That'd make a difference.
When we, if we go down this road, which anticipate we will, our financial advisor, actually not our financial advisor, excuse me, we're going to have to, we're going to be obligated to go out and retain a rate study, and they're going to dictate how the rate will be structured.
Yes, Councilmember Cravitz?
Just a tiny comment on the cost question when it comes to imposing the bond on ratepayers. Just thinking out loud here, if we go for 20 million, let's say that, we end up owing 35 million over the 30 years. So 15 million in interest, roughly, just ballparking it. Divide that by 30 years, divide that by 12, divide that by 30,000 ratepayers. I don't know if we have 30,000 ratepayers, but if we do, that's $3 a month. So it's a little bit of a burden, but I don't think it's going to blow the whole battleship out of the water, just to... So let's wait for the numbers to actually come back before we worry about it too much, I think is probably wise, because we don't know what the interest rate will be or what the term is or anything yet.
Yeah, but she, Councilmember Fernandez just replied to me that she's, she can hear, but it's, she's on, but it's really hard to hear. So I'm sure Linda, city clerk, excuse me, said to her, if you're right next to her, are you able to just talk into, just ask her if she has any questions or what the mayor just communicated to her?
Councilmember Fernandez, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Good. Mr. Draper, thank you so much. Good presentation. It's always nice to have dialogue and obviously know your business, so thank you so much. Anything else? Okay, we'll be adjourned. Thank you, everybody.